Good evening. The January 18th, 2024 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. I am Chair of the Board Trustee Rail, and if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda tonight is to welcome our two new trustees, trustee Greg Mitchell and trustee Valerie Jennings. And I want to personally welcome you to the board. We look forward to your contribution on the board. And as kind of a first step to get you to hit the ground running, we're going to have a little swearing-in ceremony. We need to make that a photo op, and so I've been told where we need to do that. So what we're going to do is if the two of you would come around and stand in front of the dais, I will move around here and we'll get you sworn in.
I think we'll turn. You're going to turn because Susan's going to take pictures.
Yeah. If you would stand there and turn the face that way.
Oh, okay.
There's a camera up there that wants to capture your smiling face.
It's for the people.
I'm going to administer the oath of office to both of you at the same time. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Greg Mitchell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas?
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of a Johnson County Community College trustee.
The duties of a Johnson County Community College trustee.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You may sit now. I just want to comment, now that you're all sworn in and officially seated, that you are part of a collegial and really great group of individuals. And we look forward to working with both of you, and we look forward to the contribution that you're going to make to the board as the governing body of this college. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us and a lot of good things as well, and we look forward to both of you making a contribution. And with that, I'll open it up to any other comments that any of the other trustees might have.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is roll call. And in lieu of officially taking role, I'll just acknowledge for the sake of the record that we have seven trustees in attendance tonight, and we do have a full quorum. The next item on the agenda is awards and recognitions. It's my understanding we don't have anything this evening. I partially do to the break, and everyone's been gone for the holiday, so we're sort of just getting back with the weather and everything going, so nothing in awards and recognitions. This is the time on our agenda that we've reserved as an open forum where the public can come and make contents of comments if they wish to the board. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's statements to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues, or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes, or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. There are no registered speakers at tonight's meeting. And with that, we'll move on to the next item. And by the way, this is going whiz-bang, right? We're going to be done with this meeting in about 10 minutes. Next on the agenda is board reports. And the first report is from the Student Senate, which is generally presented by Apuna Gonzalez, so we always look forward to hearing from her. She does not have an update for the board this evening, so she is not in attendance. Her last report was during finals week, and the Student Senate has not yet met for this semester. She'll be back with her report in February. Next up is the college lobbyist, Mr. Dick Carter, who is also not here. So we'll get our report from Mr. Carter next time. I can't promise you this every month, by the way. Next up on the agenda is the report from the college council from Jason Arnett, and I believe we actually have someone approaching the podium.
I'm not an AI, I promise. Good evening, everybody. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Jason Arnett. My day job is to manage retail dining services here at the college, which is the food court, the market, and our two cafes. And so I'm here as a co-chair of the college council, which I've been in that role for two years now. So happy to be here, and welcome to the new trustees. College council met for the first time this year on Monday, January 8th. I think we got Dr. Corb in that meeting on her second day here. And we got reports from everybody who was there. Student Senate wasn't there because no classes, so they weren't here. Staff council reported that they are looking into some tools for employee communication and connection, and that they are having some preliminary discussions with campus stakeholders. There's more on that to come. Counseling, as always, told us that they are busy, seeing as many students as possible every day. ABC informed us that there were discussions about course shell evaluation tools, and that they continue to look at the academic master plan. College council then discussed how to define processes for how issues are vetted consistently from ABC and staff council before they come up to us. We believe there's some revision needed to the college council bylaws because we don't have a definition currently on how to disseminate any findings or recommendations or inquiries we may have on those issues. So if we have to have something go out to an appropriate decision-making body, we need to know how to do that and be consistent about that. Members of the Subcommittee on Communications Issues, which came up from staff council over a year ago, will be meeting with institutional research on January 23rd to go over some data from focus groups we conducted in October. The Subcommittee feels it's still on track to share whatever findings they may have in the spring on those communication issues. And then finally, as part of the All Campus Meeting on January 10th during PLD Week, along with Staff Council Chair Kaitlin Crumsek and ABC Chair Barry Bailey, we talked about shared governance at the college. And I reported college council successes, excuse me, college council successes in helping facilitate conversations between departments and then assisting ABC with issues around academic integrity. I reminded everyone who attended that their voice is important, and that's what shared governance is all about, making sure that their voice is heard, and that barring running for a seat on their appropriate council, we wanted them to find their representatives and talk, and tell us their questions, concerns, and points to ponder. And that's the only way we can help with anything. So that's all I have for you this month.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett. Any questions or comments for Mr. Arnett?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you all.
Happy New Year.
Next up is the report from the Faculty Association, and we'll welcome Andrea Vu to the podium.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Andrea Vu, and I am the president of the JCCC Faculty Association. First, I'd like to welcome our two new trustees, Valerie Jennings and Greg Mitchell. We are delighted that you have committed to serve this college and the larger community. As someone who values public service, I must say I appreciate all the folks who are willing to serve their communities and improve the lives of others. The role of a JCCC trustee is of great importance. The board's decisions impact so many, such as our current and future students, our employees, and the broader community. This college relies on all of you to ensure that we move in the right direction and ensure the future of this college, and so I thank you all, including the former trustees that are still here, for continuing to serve and choosing to serve this college and the community. Next, I'd also like to welcome Dr. Judy Core back to campus as our new interim president. Transitions can be tough, but with your past experience as part of the JCCC community and the relationships you've already built with so many of us at the college, we hope that stepping into this role is not as daunting as it could be. I'm sure there's quite a lot that you're navigating as you take on this monumental task, and the faculty and probably all of us at the college are happy to support you in whatever way that we can. In addition to those thank yous, I'd also like to just congratulate the new board officers: Chair Trustee Rail, Vice Chair Laura Smith Everett, Treasurer Mark Hamel, and Secretary Don Rattan. All of us are really in good hands with you all at the helm, and so we really appreciate your leadership and commitment. As you probably know, last week was the Professional Learning Days, also called PLD Week, and then this week is the start of our classes. So although there have been some weather-related cancellations that impacted the PLD Week schedule and delayed the start of the semester for us, everyone here has done their best to overcome the obstacles and start the semester off on a good foot. Many of the folks that I have spoken to the last couple of days and weeks utilize their winter break to really decompress, refresh, and come back to campus, ready to continue serving our students and our mission. I've seen a lot of energy and happy faces around campus with folks eager to get this semester going. In faculty news, Dr. Ty Edwards, who is a professor of history and the director of the Kansas Studies Institute here at JCCC, is a co-principal investigator, or COPI, for a grant that was recently awarded by the National Endowment for the Humanities under their humanities initiatives at colleges and universities. This project is titled Kansas Land Treaties Project, and it will annotate all of Ka Nation's land treaties. These land treaties created the land base of the state of Kansas and the land grant that founded K-State. Dr. Edwards is collaborating with two English faculty at K-State, and together they're working with Ka Nation citizens to document the rich history. As part of the project, they will create an open access digital resources hub that students, researchers, and the general public can have, so that the general public can have a greater understanding of Ka Nation and its critical role in Kansas history. I'd also like to note the work of Anthony Fenari and Melinda Bryan-Smith, I see Melinda out there, from the grants office at JCCC, because they were a huge help to Dr. Edwards and her colleagues in developing this grant proposal and securing the grant. So we're really lucky to have such an outstanding grants office. And I just want to say as a little reminder of outstanding they are, in the past, they have assisted Professor Allison Smith to acquire another NEH grant that was titled Infusing Contemporary American Indian Cultural Studies across the curriculum. And they also assisted Professors Heather Seitz and Melanie Harvey secure a successful grant application with the National Science Foundation, and that grant has actually enabled the development of our course-based undergraduate research experiences, or CURES classes, in the STEM or science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. I'm trying to get all the acronyms spelled out, I'm sorry. Just a brief reminder that CURES support courses with hands-on, real-world research experiences for our students. It means that students don't have to be specifically selected to participate in an extracurricular project. They don't have to take additional independent study credit hours, pay for additional credits, or spend additional time outside of their coursework to do these projects. The research experiences are built into their course and completed as part of the class work. This means students who might not otherwise have the time or money to participate in extracurriculars have these opportunities to do real-world, authentic research. So last fall, they had six different courses that were CURES courses, and then for next fall, they're planning to offer an additional 12. So in addition to Professors Seitz and Harvey, we have about 12 additional faculty working as a cohort to do these CURES projects. So I believe Dr. Corb used the phrase "it takes a village" in her opening remarks at the All Campus Meeting last week in reference to supporting our students. It takes a village. And I think some of the work that is coming through with these grants really exemplifies that because it's involving faculty, staff, and a bunch of other people. So just wanted to highlight that. As a plug, on January 27th, the Midwest Trust Center and Kansas Studies Institute are bringing North the Musical to JCCC. The show is based on actual accounts of escapes by enslaved persons, including of the playwright's own family through the Underground Railroad Network from Louisiana through Kansas and beyond. While acknowledging the realities of enslavement, the musical encompasses the full experience of freedom seekers, the optimism, bravery, playfulness, wonder, and suspense and mystery of that experience. So the shows are on Saturday, January 27th. There's a 2:00 PM show and a 7:00 PM show. They are in Yardley Hall. And then at 1:00 PM, right before the 2:00 PM show, there's a panel discussion on Kansas and the Underground Railroad: Legend, History, and Art, in the Virginia Krebs Room, which is Midwest Trust Center 107. Panelists include the playwright Ashley St. Armant, Chair of the Quindarrow Ruins Project and Foundation Board Reverend Stacy Evans, and JCCC history professor Jim Leicher. Lastly, I had previously invited all of you to the FA January Welcome Back Party that was originally scheduled for tomorrow evening at Quavira Falls Clubhouse. Unfortunately, they have frozen pipes, so fear not. We have arranged that we will postpone our party till next Friday. So instead of this Friday, we are having it next Friday, and you are all welcome. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Andrea. Any questions or comments for Andrea? Trustee Mitchell?
Just wanted to thank you for the very warm welcome, and I appreciate the fact that you are here this evening and pretty much everybody here who works for the college, because I know it makes for a very long day. So thank you for that. Appreciate the warm welcome again.
Anyone else? Before you leave the podium, I always enjoy your comments. I've mentioned that before, so thank you for that. Thanks for highlighting the great things that the faculty is doing. We all know that you guys are doing terrific things, and we rarely hear about all of it, but it's always nice to get some highlights. And I want to echo your shout-out to the grants office because without their work, some of the great works that's going on with the faculty and elsewhere on the campus just wouldn't happen. So thanks for that as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is our report from the Johnson County Education Research Triangle and trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you. You will be shocked by this, but I have no updates for this report. We have not met yet, and I am waiting to hear back. They are also shifting on that board. They've got several new members, and they're getting a calendar together, and I will let you know at the next meeting when we meet next.
Thank you. Again, we're whizzing right along. However, I do think our next report from the foundation, I'm sorry, Kansas Association of Community Colleges, I'm going to get out of order, and trustee Cross, I think that's probably a payback for all the times that you missed it on the agenda. But I apologize for that. So the Kansas Association of Community Colleges report, trustee Cross.
Just a brief one. Today, the KACC Donuts with Legislators and New Trustee Training Events, excuse me, Donuts with Legislators was today. The new trustee training event, I believe, is, was last week, but there's another one on January 23rd. There's a Zoom option there, which I recommend, and I remember trustee David Lindstrom gave me his binder 10 years ago to look at and read through. There was interaction with legislators today. I know we had a great showing from the Johnson County delegation. I was not able to go, but Vice President Kate Allen was in attendance, and Mr. Carter said he couldn't make it because he's been really sick, too. So good event, where you can network, and I think in the words of Jason Arnett, all there is is relationships and connections. Nothing else to report this time?
Any questions for trustee Cross?
Do you have any idea if the, I do, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead, trustee Smith Everett.
If we have, if we are going to be hosting in the next year, I think it's about time for KCCT to come back to us, and I didn't know if you had any idea if we're on the calendar for this following year.
I don't know, but let me check on that and get back to you. Because it seems to me it was two or three years ago we hosted something.
I think I was brand-new. That's why I'm asking, because I think I was in my very first couple of months on the board, and they came through, and trustee Ingram indicated it kind of rotates about every three or four years.
That rings a bell. I do know, I think during COVID, we missed some quarterly meetings.
Oh, that's true.
So we could be a bit behind. But let me check with Heather Morgan, our executive director at KACC, and get back to you.
And I want to echo trustee Cross, your comments about the upcoming training. So one session has already occurred. I believe there's a session on Monday at 4:00 and again on Tuesday at 4:00 by Zoom. And I would encourage any of the trustees who are able to attend that to do so, not just trustee Mitchell and trustee Jennings, but any of us, if you have an opportunity and if you need to get that link, let me know after the meeting, and I'll make sure I get that to you because we do have a link where you can access that training, and I would encourage anyone who can to attend.
I attended that last Friday, and it was good.
Good.
Yeah.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Yes, trustee Cross?
If I may, I can't remember if we have an ACCT update, but I do think we have some people signed up to go to the Legislative Summit next month.
We do.
I know I had approved some of those, and I certainly would encourage anybody to go that wants to go. But there's fabulous training. You know, I was a new lawyer when I took the office 10 years ago, and it's just wonderful to learn and hear from people across the country about how we're supposed to do this job. It's largely a show-up-and-shut-up job, but you still have to pay attention and get along with each other.
Yeah. To your point, trustee Cross, I know that trustee Rattan, trustee Mitchell, and trustee Jennings are all planning to attend the conference in Washington, DC. I also had an opportunity as a brand-new trustee back in 2008 or 2009 to attend that. Great training, and I'm glad that our trustees get the benefit of that training. So any other comments from you, trustee Cross?
No, thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the foundation report, and trustee Hamel.
Thank you. The foundation executive committee met on January 9th, and the full board of directors met on January 16th. That was me and Valerie Jennings' first, trustee Jennings' first meeting. The committee focused on recommendations on how to make the organizational improvements made by an outside vendor, make philanthropy work. Action steps were discussed, and the foundation executive committee will work to provide the full board of directors' next steps and implementation plans. Some enchanted evening for 2024. The dates have been set for November 9th at the Overland Park Convention Center. Currently, event chairs are being recruited, and the nomination form for Johnson County of the Year is open and available. When does that end? Does anybody know the date? Is that somewhere here? Pretty soon, I think, actually. You can submit at jcc.edu/jcoy to submit nomination. The foundation was also hosting a community social on February 20th, but that has been canceled as of now. I think they're going to try to do something here in April. And the JCC Foundation's Spring Scholarship Luncheon will take place on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 11:30 in the Capitol Federal Conference Room at the Rainier Center. So please save the date.
23rd?
23rd. April 23rd.
Thank you, trustee Hamel. Any questions or comments for trustee Hamel?
I do, Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee Smith Everett.
I just wanted to inform this board because it was kind of happening at the very tail end of our service on the foundation, and now we have two new members, that the foundation board is looking to restructure a little bit and shrink in size. As many of you know that have served, it's got a lot of people, I mean 20 to 30. And so when they contracted with Make Philanthropy Work, that is coming out as one of their top recommendations. And so I think that will be coming forward to this board, and I just wanted to inform you all of that because I think that's going to be happening in one of the next couple meetings. And at the last meeting that we attended, I think it was also the recommendation that Executive Director Joy Ginsburg presents that, so that she can really give the full explanation of why they're recommending that change. And I think really in the end, when you have that many people on a board, your purpose and your ability to really do great things, kind of, I don't know, it just, it's difficult to really get done, and that's what they're wanting to do, is make the board more effective and really be able to be a great fundraising arm for our college and some of the great projects and things we want to do.
Makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Any questions about that? I just wanted to comment before we leave the foundation report about the Johnson County of the Year nominations, and I believe trustee Hamel, those nominations closed January 31st, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
The Johnson County of the Year is an opportunity for us to recognize people who have made tremendous contributions to the community as a whole over the years. And the list of people who have received those awards in the past is just a tremendous testament to some of the active people that we have in Johnson County and the good works that they do. And I would encourage everyone, if they have someone that they think is worthy of consideration for that award, to make that nomination and give us the opportunity to recognize people who have made such tremendous contributions to the community. So I would encourage you to do that. You can do it online. It's a quick little forum. You just fill in the blanks. It doesn't take very long at all, and then the selection committee will have an opportunity to review all of those nominations. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the Audit Committee Report. We do have a recommendation to bring forward out of the Audit Committee, and so I'll present that report just briefly. The Audit Committee, who at the time was trustees Cross and Ingram, reviewed the proposed working agenda on, and it was determined that the 2024 working agenda would move forward for consideration when all other board committee working agendas were considered. The proposed 2024 working agenda can be found on page two of your board packet, and hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to review that. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2024 Audit Committee working agenda as it appears on page two of the board packet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by the chair, seconded by trustee Cross. Do we have any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recommendation passed. Motion passes seven to zero, and that concludes the Audit Committee Report. Next up is the report of the Management and Finance Committee, and again, trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. The Management and Finance Committee held their meeting here at 8:30 on Wednesday, January 3rd. Information related to the meeting can be found on pages three through six of the board packet. Management and Finance Committee received the following report from staff. Rob Caffrey, Vice President, Information Services, along with Philip Mean, Executive Director, IT Security, and John Kumar, Executive Director of Client Support Services, provided the Quarterly Information Service Report. Mr. Mean gave an update on expenditure of cybersecurity grant funds received from the state of Kansas and reported on the information security roadmap related to single sign-on and multi-factor authentication. Mr. Kumar reported on a Client Support Services, Activities and Technical Support Center, Laboratory Support Center, and Multimedia Services. Mr. Caffrey provided an overview of the new I and T Governance Task Force, whose first meeting will be held later in January. Other agreements, there was one agreement with the outside organization presented during the meeting, related to information can be found on the consent agenda on page 18 of the board packet. Financial ratio analysis from Janelle Vogler, Vice President, CFO, reported on the college's fiscal health using financial ratios based on the financial statements to the most recent fiscal year, fiscal end June 30th, 2023. This information is compiled annually and This information is compiled annually and monitors certain JCC financial ratios over time and provides comparisons to a number of peer institutions. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facilities Planning, reviewed progress on the GEB first floor renovations currently under construction on campus and the status of the CDL driving range project. Management and Finance Committee has the following recommendations to present this evening. Rachel Leers, Executive Vice President and Finance Administrative Services, presented a draft of the 2024 Management and Finance Committee Working Agenda. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee Board of Trustees to approve the 2024 Management, Finance and Committee Working Agenda. Did we have a chance to look at that?
Yes, are you making the motion?
Yep.
Motion made by trustee Hamel, seconded by trustee Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven to nothing. Go ahead.
All right. Jim Fiker, Executive Director of Procurement Services, presented on the procurement report. And this month, we have one recommendation for human resources consulting services. And making the motion, it is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve single source justification to Fine Line HR Consulting for an estimated amount of $453,846, bringing the total estimated amount to $653,846 through March of 2024.
I would so moved.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Cross, seconded by trustee Hamel. Any discussion? Trustee Mitchell.
Yeah, I'm just curious if this additional sum of money is for a specific scope of service or if it contemplates à la carte services that would be provided over a period of time.
So I can, I learned a little bit more since you and I spoke. And so this additional amount is requested and it is to cover some expenses that have already occurred. What happened was when Fine Line came in, there was initial, you know, scope of service and idea of what it was going to take to do it. Once they got here, they realized that one person being here three days a week was not going to be enough because we needed some process work. So they added another person working on that. We also needed someone to help us with compensation and so they added another person to assist with that. If you, if you look at it, we actually are at a point now into the contract where we're starting to back away from some of these services. And we do have an opportunity to manage what we use going forward. And so we're looking at that and, you know, working on it. But there are ways now that we can start pulling back as we transition to our own BPHR and being able to move forward on our own.
So some of those additional monies are for expenses that have been already incurred?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one question since.
Just one moment, please trustee Smith Everett, I believe you were next.
Yes. So I was just going to speak to a little bit of the history, just on the behalf of a new board. And that we, I think this is a difficult decision for those of us that, for those of us that have been here through the transition with HR. And I for one will support it, but I'm really glad to hear, President Corb, that we're, we're scaling back the amount of services because I think in the end, my ultimate concern is that we're equipping, that Fine Line has come on board to really equip our own people to be able to manage our HR. And that when we get our exec, our Vice President of HR, of course, that will make all that a lot easier. But to me, taking care of our people is paramount to one of the things we do in an oversight capacity. And so I will support it because I want to ensure that we have a running and successful is not the word, but a fully operational HR. But it's a, it's a large amount that was not planned for and that's my, my real fiduciary concern. And I have already talked to President, Vice President Leers. And, you know, they're making adjustments to account for this extra cost that we didn't plan. As always, our professionals work around it. But it's for the public, I just wanted to acknowledge that it is a large sum of money that was not part of the original plan when we brought Fine Line on. So that concludes my thoughts, madam chair.
Thank you. Trustee Jennings.
Yeah, so I just have one question. So if we're starting to scale back because we can, will that shift the amount of money that they are requesting over the next several months?
It should, yes. If, if we can work to bring some of that work back in, we're going to review like some of the processes that have already been developed and some of the ones that are planned going forward and try to determine, could some of those wait? Or are they urgent? So there are just a few things like that that I think we can look at to just scale back a bit. But we're not going to, you know, we're not going to undercut anything or make, you know, not let something happen that needs to happen. But I, I think there are opportunities and, and that's really the way the contract was designed in the beginning.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Cross.
I thank you all for your questions and comments here tonight. And I concur with trustee Smith Everett that for the newer trustees, I can't nor should I say everything I want to say about this particular point on the agenda. But you should pay attention to it. And I guess my question for Dr. Corb is what would a Vice President of HR be paid by way of comparison?
Well, not that much. I don't know exactly because it would depend on a lot of things, but it would not be the amount that.
As entertaining as some of the questions and concerns about events of the past month have been, there were equally concerning things in our budget and surprises and some problems that we had the past two years. So I just want to say to the new trustees that please pay attention to this. Fine Line's done nothing untoward. I'm glad to have them there. They've helped us shore up a hole in our boat and we appreciate the work that they're doing. This is not to say that they've done anything wrong or untoward. I trust everyone that's looking at it now, the people in the department, HR have felt attacked or under assault and that's not really our intention. It is nevertheless to just provide a functioning HR department so that we can move forward as a, as a college. So as Dr. Jerry Cook used to say to me all the time, like these things need our critical eye and our attention and please just pay attention. So, thank you, madam chair.
Thank you trustee Cross. I just wanted to make a few comments and I, I want to echo what the other trustees have said that we ended up here unexpectedly and were required to engage Fine Line to help us get our processes and procedures in HR up to snuff so that we could operate more efficiently and effectively. Two things that I just want to comment on briefly. The first is we did not have an employee engagement committee meeting in January. And so it's been a little while since we've heard anything from Fine Line about their deliverables. I know that up until then, the deliverables that we had received from them were right on, on target, spot on, exactly what we had tasked them with doing. And I'm confident that they've continued to do that good works. But I'll look forward to hearing from the employee engagement committee at our next board meeting about where we are with some more of those more recent deliverables and, and how far we've come with the good work that Fine Line is doing. And the second thing that I, I just want to briefly mention is the ongoing search and hiring process for our new Vice President of HR. I certainly had hoped, as I think many of other, of the other trustees also hoped, that we would have someone in that role by the end of January. It does not appear as though that's going to happen. And I just want to echo again the importance of keeping that search process going in an efficient manner so that we can get our new Vice President of HR selected and in turn get her executive team selected as well. It's my, it's my sense that that process was not necessarily being driven last year the way that, that we had hoped. I am confident that President Corb, who is now driving that process, and I know that because we've talked about it, is on it. And we're going to see some movement and hopefully get somebody on board. We have to get our leadership in HR squared away so that we can make that transition to Fine Line. And hopefully that will happen sooner rather than later. With that, I had a question trustee Hamel for you out of your report. And I'm wondering if just we could get a very brief update on the two items that you mentioned, the GEB renovations and the CDL driving range project, to see where we are with those. And I anticipate you're going to call on Mr. Hall to, to help us with that.
You'd do a much better job than I would, so.
He's always so polite.
So we are continuing to work on the GEB first floor, phase two, which is the, we started the demo on the restrooms. So that piece is well underway, the president's office, the board room. It looks like they should be getting about finished up by the end of March. Probably April, we'll be moving the furniture in and hopefully have the board in there by the first part of May. So we're, we're thinking that that's kind of the schedule. It may move a little faster, but I don't want to tell you you're moving any faster than that until we know for sure. On the CDL, that project, we're really in the home stretch now. We had our first pre-construction meeting today. It got approved by the city of Edgerton, so everything's finalized there. We'll have some utility stuff coming forward with some easements for the property, but we're ready to break ground next week. And as soon as that happens, there'll be a kind of a groundbreaking. And then that project, actually, I think we're looking at starting the construction of the building probably in March with finishing in June, around the end of June with occupancy in August. So if the weather holds and we're keeping our fingers crossed that that'll happen, we will be on target to open in the fall of the year.
Thank you for that. I'm really excited about the CDL driving range. I was talking to an area employer just yesterday about their difficulty in getting CDL drivers and how challenging it is because there just aren't enough folks out there for the jobs that are there. And I, so I think that getting that up and running is going to be a tremendous contribution to the, to employers all across the metro. So thank you for that. Any questions for Mr. Hall? Trustee Smith Everett.
I have two, real quick. Can you introduce yourself? I'm holding on to Greg Musso's legacy, name and title.
Tom Hall, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facility Planning.
Thank you. And then will there be, will we get to have any part? I don't know if there's shovels sharp enough for the cold, hard ground that is out there, but any plans to make any kind of ceremonial groundbreaking ribbon cutting?
Looking at Lisa Waldman because her department's been handling that part of the process. So I'm not sure who the invites went out to, so I'm going to turn it over to Lisa.
Well, I for one advocate for it because I think we need as much publicity out in the public that we are doing this and it's happening because like you said, employers are chomping at the bit.
So, thank you. Elisa Waldman, Vice President of Workforce Development and Continuing Education. So we have been holding off because of the weather and we would be delighted to have all of you join us. I think the, we are tentatively, but quite seriously tentatively scheduled for January 30th. And I will make sure you are all invited. It will be a very brief ceremony outdoors. And if next week's weather is as muddy as it seems, it will, it is challenging because there's very limited, there's no parking, so we have to walk across the street. That said, we'd love to have any of you there and J E Dunn will be providing the shovels and the hard hats. We will have though, a much grander ribbon cutting in the summer. So we've been playing this very tentatively. It was also pending passing the city last week through the city council. So yes, for next week, if you're available, week after next, if you're available, I will send you all that information. But certainly we want all of you present or all of you who are available at the ribbon cutting, which will be much more widely publicized and, and celebrated. And that'll be in the building and in the facility. So, thank you.
As long as it's above zero.
Exactly.
Any other questions?
No, do you like how myself invited us?
I did like that, yeah. I did like that. Invited us. Any other, any other questions for Mr. Hall before he leaves the podium? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for trustee Hamel before we move on?
I think we have a motion.
Oh, yes, we did have a motion.
In a second.
Yes.
I apologize. I completely got off track. So we had a motion that was made by trustee Cross, seconded by trustee Hamel to approve the recommendation related to the financing for Fine Line Consulting. We've had our discussion. All in favor, answer by saying yes.
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 Opposed? No. Motion carries seven to zero and I apologize for that. And now for our treasurer's report, it's the man of the hour, trustee Hamel.
All right. The following pages contain the treasurer's report at month end, November 30th, 2023. Expenditures and the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is my recommendation to the College of Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month of November 2023, subject to audit.
Making the motion?
Making the motion.
Motion made by trustee Hamel. Do we have a second? Seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Anything else from the treasurer's report?
That is it. End of my report.
The next item on the agenda is the president's monthly report to the board. And before we get started with that, I just want to officially welcome President Dr. Judy Corb. I know how reluctant Dr. Corb is to be in the spotlight, so I will keep my comments brief. But the board called on Dr. Corb in the comfort of her retirement to come out of retirement and help us navigate the next several months, potentially a year or more as we search for our next president. I for one believe that the college could not be in better hands. I think it's tremendously beneficial that we have someone who has such a long legacy with the college and such historical knowledge of the things that have happened here. And I believe, I will not speak for Dr. Corb, but I believe that the sole motivation for her to come out of retirement and take on this arduous role is her love of the college and the students and the community that we serve. So thank you very, very much for taking us on. And with that, I will turn it over to you to make your, your report.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. Well, my first two weeks have been a whirlwind of meetings, of listening, of learning, relearning things I thought I already knew. I, yesterday I was on my way in and I met a student who was looking for her classroom and she said, "Do you work here?" And I said, "Yes." And she said, "Well, I can't find my class. Could, could you tell me, I need this, where's the CLB building?" And I said, "Oh, I can help you." And then I had a brain freeze and I was like, CLB, CLB. And I'm standing in the courtyard and I, I see Campus Services Building. I think it has a C in it and I think that's not it. And there's no classrooms there. And so then I'm thinking, oh, Classroom Lab Building. I know where that is. And I said, "Oh, it's right over here by the library." But I wasn't 100% confident, so I walked over there with her and then told her that I- I hope she had a great day in class, and I did not introduce myself. And so I have listened a lot, though, and I have tried to sort out expectations and priorities. There are a lot. And, but I think I'm beginning to see themes in what I'm hearing and, and a bit of a clear path to what we need to do as we step forward next. Couple of things. I, I was asked to specifically review the discussion regarding cosmetology so that I had a good understanding of what had happened up to this point, and knowing that we have a couple of new trustees that hadn't been through the whole process either. So I, I have spent some time on that, and here's my very brief recap on this because I can't give all the details, but anyway. An initial overview of the cosmetology program was presented in September, and it included historical, current, and future information. Discussion followed that, leading to considering sunsetting the program or committing significant resources to change curriculum, facilities, and staffing. I've been a part of many conversations over the years to discuss the viability of our cosmetology program. And at this time, I think we face a critical juncture of needing the College to invest significant resources if we are going to offer an excellent program to our community with the quality that we would like to offer. So no recommendation was presented for vote at the September meeting. The purpose of the discussion at that meeting was to present facts and to create an opportunity for dialogue regarding what was being considered. During that discussion in September, several questions focused on the rationale leading up to making a decision on the future of the program. The questions were answered using the data and projections that were gathered by our institutional research and finance and administration. And that was the data that was used when we were considering this in the last several standard academic program review processes that we went through. There were also alternative options suggested and questions answered regarding the viability of those options. So then Administration presented the recommendation to sunset the program in October, and after further discussion, the vote was taken and resulted in a tie. Notice was given that the motion would be renewed in November. In November, motion was renewed, and with more discussion, it ultimately passed at that point. So then, following that November vote, Administration followed through on their next steps to actually sunset the cosmetology program, and that included official written notice of discontinuing, discontinuation of the program to the Higher Learning Commission, identifying a teach-out plan for the students, the current students that were in there, and then reallocating one of the vacant faculty positions to CNC machining, which fulfills a commitment to hire a new faculty member under a $1.2 million appropriation for welding and machining that required that we make that hire. So knowing that our budget guidelines for FY '25 indicate no new full-time positions to be added to the staffing table, the only way to be able to hire a new faculty member in a new program would be to reallocate an existing bargaining unit position. And so that position has been posted. The decision to sunset this program has taken a, a bit of a unique path because, in my experience, typically, the program would be evaluated through the academic program review process, a decision made, and then that would be placed on the Board consent agenda along with other curriculum changes. But I've reviewed the transcripts from the three board meetings where this was discussed. I do think it was appropriate for Administration to bring it forward as it's an operational change in academic programming that did follow and go through our internal academic review process. So that was what, that was basically what I, what I found out there. I have also been learning and had several meetings to try to understand the compensation plan developed by Culpeper, because I know it is a priority to work toward implementation of that plan. I don't quite have that mastered yet. I have had a lot of help, though, in getting questions answered and explanation to spreadsheets, and so people have been extremely helpful in trying to bring me up to speed on that. That's just going to take me a, a little bit to, to really understand it. But with a new semester underway, we're really looking forward to engaging our students in creating the best learning experience possible. There is a full campus, monthly campus report to the Board that is on your SharePoint site, and I believe it's also in Info Hub. So there, you know, you'll find many notable activities and accomplishments from all across the campus. So that concludes my report for this month. More to come.
Thank you. And before I open it up for questions, I, I just want to comment, I, I'm glad that you are focusing attention on the Culpeper project and the compensation plan. You are uniquely qualified to really understand and evaluate how that's going to be implemented so that it's done right. You know, as the former VP of HR and other positions in that, that area, I'm confident that, that you're going to, to get it right. And as I've said in several board meetings, let's get it done correctly, not quickly. And so let's make sure we're getting it right before we move forward. So I appreciate that you've turned your attention to that. And with that, any questions for, for President Corb?
I have a question.
Trustee Smith Everett, and then Trustee Ratan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you, just as Chair Rail did, for agreeing to come into this firestorm of a community college and take it on, knowing as much as you do about what that actually means and the commitment that it takes. And I am greatly, greatly appreciative of your willingness to do it because, as most of us on the dias field, this college is absolutely worth our best, and we're so grateful that you're willing to reinvest yourself in the college. I wanted to just briefly say that I don't want to drudge up old things and old feelings, but the cosmetology issue for me, as one of the dissenting voters, really came down to asking multiple times for the past administration to give us some revised options and viability, and we just never saw them. And for as many people that reached out about that program and adjusted, and as many people that were affected by it, it doesn't settle well with me that we didn't have anything but the two options we were given. And that's really what I asked personally for, that I just never got any of those other viable, any of those options and, and their, a, a check of their viability. So if it comes up again, I just wanted that, out in the public, that that was for this one dissenting vote, the critical make it or break it for me. So that concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Ratan.
Thank you, Chair Rail. I have three things. One is I am excited for your leadership and also thank you. Two is I'd like to add a ditto to what Vice Chair Smith Everett said is, I love to see options, even if it does not come to pass or become a reality, I still would like to see more options, and it is unsettled with me as well. And then the third question was, could you provide an update on where we are for credit hours and, and enrollment so far this semester?
I can. We are currently, and all of course, of course, all the numbers aren't in and everything isn't completely settled, but our total headcount on, in credit is up 1.4% and total credit hours, 3%. So there, there will be some adjustment with that, but that is close to, I think, what the projections were and what we thought would, would likely happen, so that's where we seem to be falling.
Thank you very much. That's the conclusion.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Oh, Trustee Cross.
Yeah, I think for the sake of time, I'll concur with what Chair Smith Everett and Ratan have said. I do want to thank you, and without being dramatic, when the University of Kansas beat Oklahoma in football this year, the quarterback, Jason Bean, collapsed his head into a towel. He was so relieved and frankly in disbelief that we beat Oklahoma. When Trustee Rail said that we couldn't be in better hands, I, I, my, my face literally collapsed into my hand because I want to thank you for being here. I, I've been a community organizer and a moderately successful one, so I strongly disagree with this administration and previous administration's decision to discontinue cosmetology. I, you know, I've had some input from various sources with respect to the Gainful Employment Act and other points of analysis that were, I believe, considered. And I do believe thoughtful consideration was made in arriving at this conclusion. It is nevertheless my position that, that I respectfully disagree with it and will work ever to support you. And as I, I'm on a mission to reference every trustee I've served with, but I can't, I don't know how to get there. But as Dr. Cook has said, or I told him, you know, "You may have my dissent, but you always have my support." And, you know, that may be difficult for some people to ascertain what that means, and we're all busy, and that includes me, with all due respect. Like, I don't always have the time to go meet with people and plow through everything that, that they considered, even assuming that person or that group of people would make that time available to me. I, I don't have the time to do it. Being chair for two years was an incredible time commitment. I had the tremendous support of, of this board and Trustee Ingram and Trustee Muesel, and so I, I couldn't have been better supported. And that includes by Dr. Bound in many ways. And I get it. I'm a businessman. I run three businesses. It makes sense. I, I just disagree with it. I, I, I asked you to please go through that again, and I appreciate you doing that because I felt it was critical for Trustees Jennings and Mitchell to understand where we're coming from. And, you know, I always fumble, whether it was Aristotle or Socrates that, that taught the law, the classic training for the law is math, you have to show your work. And I, I really don't, I make more money if I don't stick my fingers in this place, and I don't want to do that. But from time to time, I'm going to ask, how did we get there? Like, what is our work? I respect the people that made the decision. I just disagree with it. I, I don't like everything Joe Biden does. You know, I, I really don't. I love, I love Jerry Moran, who's been good to this college. I don't agree with everything Senator Moran does, and I let him know it. But I also support him when he's right. And, you know, I'm not perfect. I've made mistakes. I'm just asking, what were we thinking? How did we get there? It makes sense from a dollar and cents standpoint as a business owner. I get it. My job here, though, isn't as a businessman. I'm a trustee of this college, and to protect us against any political wind, that's the legacy I want, that if nobody knows my name here after I leave, I, I will have done my job. Because this place will, the, the bar is high, the standards are high, as someone said last month, and our duty is to protect this against any political will and not peel away a key demographic or section of the economy and taxpaying members of society that we need to have them buy in so that they help protect us. And that's my point as a political person elected this board to provide citizen oversight. So I appreciate you all listening. I appreciate your time, and I'll, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Any other comments?
I would, no, I wasn't in on all of the discussions. I am brand new. However, given what I've learned today, I guess my question would be, can it be rebrought up and rediscovered with some of the possible requests that were made last fall that I'm hearing didn't quite get done the way some of the trustees felt was appropriate for them to make the kind of decisions that they made?
And I'm going to note, if I may, Madam Chair, I can barely hear Trustee Jennings.
Want me to start over?
No, no, no. I just, I just wanted to add that.
So if you're asking the question, can the motion be brought back again? I think that depends on how it's brought back. I'm not sure it can be brought back. I would just comment, I would just say this. The hallmark of a good governing body is exactly what we've, what we're doing right now, which is the ability to engage in professional and collegial dialogue and, from time to time, agree to disagree. Another important hallmark of any governing body is to recognize that once a decision has been made and steps have been taken in reliance on that decision, it should be very, very carefully considered before there's any attempt to walk that back. There may be circumstances from time to time that may mandate that. Is this one of those circumstances? I think we should be very careful about that. But I do appreciate the robust dialogue. I appreciate the work that President Corb has put into in looking into how we ended up, where we ended up. And I would encourage Trustees Mitchell and Jennings to go back and review the minutes from those board meetings so that you're fully informed as to what was before the Board, the robust dialogue that occurred in September and again in October. And, and then, you know, decide for yourselves where you stand on the issue. I would encourage you to do that. Whether or not it gets brought back up is something that will be taken up at a future meeting, I would anticipate, if it's going to be done at all. But I would just echo that my book here, my book here leaves me with considerable doubt as to whether it can be brought back before this Board. But that's, that's my reading of the rules.
Thank you.
So, Trustee Hamel.
Yeah, obviously, this was absolutely one of the hardest things we've gone over here at the board meetings, and if you guys have already, probably are aware of kind of all the conversations that have happened over this, and I don't think anybody came to any conclusion very easily, obviously. I do believe that there is work on trying to save pieces of the program, and I don't know if you had a chance to review any of that?
Not yet. I mean, there is conversation about it, but we aren't far enough down the road for me. I didn't want to, I didn't want to say it because I wasn't sure how far we had explored those options.
Yeah, and I, I know they're not done, and I can make speculation on some of that, things I've heard as, as possibly trying to save, so. But again, as soon as we're able to know what we, you know, what we can try to piece back into, you know, our college, I'd love to hear that. So if you have any dates, even a timeline on what it might look like, too, it'd be...
And, and I don't yet.
No worries.
I, we, we have talked about some potential things, but we have not even looked into it enough for me to, so I didn't want to say it because I was afraid then people would expect that that's what was going to happen, and I, I don't know that yet.
Yes.
But we are committed to looking into other options.
Okay.
And we will circle back with you and let you know about those.
Thank you. I'm excited to hear those.
Yeah, I can have a go at it.
Go right ahead, and then Trustee Mitchell.
Okay. I just wanted to speak to Trustee Cross and say, I, I never consider disagreement a lack of support. I, I think we have to disagree on things. I think we have to have that dialogue, and if we do that in, in a manner where we hear each other, I don't, I never consider that a lack of support because we're not always going to agree, and that's okay. I'm, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Trustee Mitchell.
I was just going to say, at, at kind of a 30,000-foot level, I think an organization like this should have a cosmetology program. But that said, I will definitely heed your recommendation to, to revisit the notes. I think that I have a duty to do that. I, I did attend some of the meetings. But the real reason why I raised my hand is that Dr. Corb forgot to mention that we were recognized in the Kansas City Business Journal list as the top, in terms of enrollment, as the top institution in the area.
Yes, and I even had that in my notes before I wrote my report, and so...
And so thank you.
You bet.
For bringing that back up to us. I appreciate that.
Can someone forward that to us, Caitlin or Liz?
Thank you, trustee Mitchell. Any other comments? Trustee Smith Everett.
Just to circle back on some of the things that have just been said, I just want to thank you for publicly saying that you're committed to revisiting the part, revisiting some of it. That is, from my standpoint, the only thing that I ever wanted was, I don't, I'm never going to be an advocate, when you think about our fiduciary responsibilities, we cannot be advocates of saving everything. We know that that's not possible. We know that that's not physically, fiscally sustainable. But if there are components that are really our workforce in the greater Kansas City region are saying is a very viable and credible career that is good for people and is sustainable for us to provide, and we always know, well, in the analysis that was given, we were the more affordable option, just being able to revisit the components of it is being committed to revisiting it. It doesn't mean you're going to come out on the side I want you to come out on, the conclusion I have, but the commitment to revisit it is, I just want to thank you for that. That is so reassuring. That is more, I just want to thank you very much for that. So that's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Any other comments? The next item on the agenda is new business. I don't believe we have any new business unless somebody wants to correct me on that. Hearing none. Old business. We also do not have any old business. That takes us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, and nobody gave me a script, by the way, so I'm winging it here. The consent agenda is an opportunity for the board to take up in a single motion several items of a fairly routine nature. The consent agenda can be found in your board packet, and I'm struggling here to find what page it starts on. But suffice to say, it is in your board packet, starting on...
Twenty-two.
Okay, page 22. And before I make a motion, I will ask if there is a request to pull any items from the consent agenda to entertain separately. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it appears in the board packet?
Motion.
Moved by trustee Ratan, seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. It's now time for us to entertain a motion to go into executive session, and I will start by saying that this is one, the first of three such motions that we will entertain this evening. And so for the first such motion, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiations, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for 45 minutes, beginning at 6:20 and ending at 7:05, if I did my math correctly, at which time, open session will resume here in this room. We would like to invite the following people to participate in this executive session: Dr. Judy Corb, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Rachel Leers, Dr. Gurbashon Singh, Jim Lane, Janelle Vogler, Kelsey Nazar, and Greg Goheen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Smith Everett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. We will begin our executive session at 6:20 and will return here at 7:05 when regular session resumes. We are back in open session, returning from executive session. No action was taken. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for an additional period of 30 minutes for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiation, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Again, no action will be taken during this session. The executive session would begin at 7:10 and conclude at 7:40. And again, we would like to invite Dr. Judy Corb, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Rachel Leers, Dr. Gurbashon Singh, Jim Lane, Janelle Vogler, Kelsey Nazar, and Greg Goheen to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Smith Everett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to nothing. And we are back into executive session at 7:10. We have returned from executive session. No action was taken. And at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into an additional executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding a pending legal matter, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session, and I'm going to be optimistic and say that the executive session will last for 30 minutes, beginning at 7:45 and ending at 8:15. Is that okay?
Yes. Seconded.
At which time, open session will resume at this same location. Invited to join this executive session are, in addition to the board, is Dr. Judy Corb, Dr. Mickey McLeod, and Kelsey Nazar. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by trustee Ratan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hamel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. We'll commence our next executive session at 7:45. Thank you. We are back from executive session and no action was taken. And at this point, I'd like to request a motion to go into our third and final executive session. Specifically, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the evaluation process with the interim president under the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for 45 minutes, commencing at 8:20 and concluding at 9:05. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
We'd like to invite Dr. Judy Corb and Kelsey Nazar to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Hamel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. We'll go into executive session at 8:20. Thank you. We have returned from executive session. No action was taken, and at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cross, seconded by trustee Smith Everett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned.